Looking for the cue for AGP? Ready to go? Ready to go? Here we go. All right, here we go. All right, here we go. Welcome everyone. Today is a special joint meeting of the City Council and the Water Reclamation Facility Citizens Advisory Committee. Today is Tuesday, February 9th, 2016. It's 4:00 PM. We're located at 209 Surf Street at the Morro Bay Veterans Memorial Building. For the record, all council members are present. We do have a quorum. And prior to calling the meeting to order, I turn it over to our WRFCAC Chair to establish quorum for the WRFCAC Board.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We do have a quorum as well. All members are here except Paul Donnelly and Steve Shively.
Great, thank you for that. And with that, we'll call the meeting to order. And I think, you know, with considering the topic, I think if we can forego any formalities of opening remarks, we can just dive right into the topic at hand. And then that will allow us more time for conversations, questions, and any closing remarks. So with that, we'll turn it over to staff for their presentation on the Water Reclamation Facility Site Selection Update and Revised Report.
Great, thanks, Mr. Mayor. And Mr. Chairman, and both Boards, I'm going to give a very brief overview and then turn it over to John Rickenbacker, our Deputy Program Manager for the program. So there has been sort of like a duck on a pond where it may not look like there's a whole lot going on, but underneath the water there is. There's been an amazing amount of work and progress going on with the WRF over the past year. I was reviewing your objectives given to staff for this year. And with the WRFCAC and the council involved, the fatal flaws analysis is essentially complete. The program management team has been brought on board and is up and running full speed. The facility master planning team contractor has been selected and is working. Excuse me, the environmental review consultant has been selected and that's ongoing. So there's great work being done even though there's no dirt being turned yet. And what we're going to talk about tonight is continuing to push the ball down the field, so to speak. The fatal flaws analysis, as I mentioned, one of the items in that was negotiation with property owners. And there's been a lot going on behind the scenes, in a sense, because of negotiation approaches in the past two or three months. And as staff did with the WRFCAC last week, wanted to bring both bodies up to speed on site selection and give you an opportunity now to discuss that. So John's going to prevent a summarized site selection report. And then you will have a robust discussion and staff is here to answer questions. And then before you adjourn, recommend that you discuss next steps. And that might be when and how to advance this to some decision, if a change, if a decision needs to be made. With that, I'll turn it over to John.
Thanks, Dave. Mr. Mayor, Mr. Chair, what I want to do is go through a summary of things that have happened that have led to where we are in the site selection process, just for the benefit of the record, but also to walk you through the report that was attached to the staff report, which essentially updates a report you received in May 2014 that talked about whittling down the sites to a preferred site. This is essentially going to be very similar to a report I gave to WRFCAC last week with a little bit of embellishment. They have the benefit now of seeing the entire report, as you do. So let's start with where you were, where you last left off. And that is to say, back at the end of 2013, you confirmed the goals for the new water reclamation facility. You established five-year goal to be operational. And you chose several sites to look at in greater detail, including the Morro Valley, Choro Valley, and Geni properties. And in May 2014, based on a report and a lot of study that went into those sites, you selected the Morro Valley as an overall preferred site. Within the Morro Valley, there were two sites that were studied in more detail, Rancho Colina and Rigetti. And at that point, you also recommended, based on that report, that Rancho Colina was a preferred site. This provides a sort of an overview of what we'd looked at previously. The big yellow blob on top is the Morro Valley. The large blob on the bottom is Choro Valley. And within those, you see some black dots. Those were sites we looked at in more detail. And within Morro Valley, you see two black dots. One, the one farther at 41 is Rancho Colina. The one closer to the town is Rigetti. This summarizes what we found back in May 2014, that Rancho Colina overall was considered preferred for several reasons. A very receptive property owner. There's an old wastewater treatment plant on the site that could be pulled out of service if the city provided services to that site. Good proximity to reclamation opportunities, presuming that agricultural reclamation was part of the program. It's a previously graded site if you were to use the area near where the existing wastewater plant is there. Could be suitable for a regional facility if other partners were involved. And consistent with coastal policies that essentially said, get it away from the ocean, have it as far from visual as possible, reduce impacts to prime farmlands and so forth. The big challenge there is it's a little bit farther up 41, so cost is a relative issue compared to farther down 41. Now, Rigetti at that time was also considered very good as well, for a lot of the same reasons. Proximity to existing infrastructure, again, reclamation opportunities were there, again, a regional facility was possible, and consistency with coastal policies was about as good. The main difference really at that time had to do with property ownership. And that at Rancho Colina, we had an active partner that was very willing to work with us at that time. And here at Rigetti, that didn't exist in 2014. You also had other potential challenges at Rigetti. You're closer to town, therefore closer to established neighborhoods in the city. And there's other biological issues we wanted to look at in more detail through investigation. So at that time, you authorized us to look in more detail, especially at Rancho Colina, but not discarding Rigetti as possible sites to go forward. And this summarizes what I just said. So at the end of the day, it was property ownership and reclamation and a few other issues, but Rigetti came out a very close second. This, I won't go into detail, but this is a summary chart from that report, which showed the ups and downs. And the fact you see a lot of yellow, which is considered moderately suitable, and the green doesn't show up too well, but you can see it's a pro and con for both sites as we went along. The big unknown on this, which is a little hard to see, is the very first line, which had to do with property ownership. An unknown at Rigetti, and in 2014, very highly suitable at Rancho Colina. So what's happened since May 2014? Several things. And you directed staff at that time to dig a little deeper on several issues. Biological issues, cultural resources, hydrogeology, geotechnical. And all of that, we started working on with other consultants under the program. And in fact, some of that's been carried forward in the facility master planning efforts that are ongoing right now. And actually, all are useful in trying to figure out how a design might come forward. The most important thing out of all that is no fatal flaws were identified at either site, biologically, cultural resource, hydrogeologically. But what is true, that all those issues, in one way or another, present challenges relative to how a design might be, or how well you could use the site, or where you might be limited to going forward on the site. But none are fatal by themselves. This map I wanted to show, just to give you an idea of what we looked at in greater detail when we did investigations on both sites. This is not so important about what it shows, but the big yellow block shows the extent to which we did biological survey work on the Rancho Colina site, which you could see covers the lower end of that site in great detail, all the way down to the highway and over to the Mobile Home Park area and to the property line to the east. We wanted to capture a wide swath to understand that site pretty well. Similarly, on Rigetti, we also did the same thing. We covered the whole area, the lower area, between the residences, both to the east and the west, all the way down to the highway, and actually across the highway, because the property actually extends across the highway. And so we investigated that, just to be complete. And we did the similar kind of thing on cultural resources and in general for all the sites, or all the studies, so we could have a very clear understanding of what's going on. Now, other new information has surfaced since May 2014, most of which has to do with property ownership. And let's start with Rancho Colina. We've worked very closely with a property owner there over the last year or so, and he's been nothing but cooperative and very helpful in trying to help us figure out what to do. But in consultation with him and his family, it's all important here, we are now based, we're limited to a smaller area on the site, and a slightly different area on the site than what we had previously investigated before May 2014. We're looking at about eight acres that we can use toward the southwestern corner. I'll show you a map, which shows that in a little more detail. And the other important thing there is that we'd be limited to only building WRF-related facilities or water-related facilities, but we wouldn't have the opportunity to investigate or address other city goals, such as a corporation yard or any other public facilities the city might want to include on a site. Now, with respect to Rigetti, that's changed too. The property has been, was put for sale and became available. And although in 2014 wasn't really available to the city, it has become that way since. We've gone down the path with both property owners, with, in the case of Mr. McElvein on Rancho Colina, trying to figure out parameters of what an MOU might be, and still trying to work that through. But in the case of Rigetti, a clearer path was available, where by entering into an option to buy the entire property, and the property owner willing to do that, the city now has, is in a position to purchase the whole property. Hasn't done it, won't do it unless we go forward on that site, but that opportunity is available to do that. This is also an important graphic to show you. A little hard to read, the red lines between the dotted black lines, but the big dotted black area is essentially the entire Morro Valley site you had us look at two years ago. The three red ovals in there are important. The one on the left is the, call it the best site to build something on Rigetti, and it's the lowest site, near where the ranch house is down there. The two ovals close to each other on the right are both within the Rancho Colina site. The one we looked at in 2014 was the oval to the right, and that essentially covered the lowest ground there too, the least visually intrusive, the most developable area, really, and the area that included and was just below the existing wastewater plant on that site. And that's what our studies in 2014 were based on. The oval on the left is a rough depiction of where we'd be limited to building now if we went to Rancho Colina. It's a little more upland, it's a little more visually prominent from Highway 41. It's eight acres, and it's a little closer to the existing residences to the west. So those are the parameters we are working with if we go to that site. And so we redid our investigation of the site based on that new direction, though at the same time, our fatal flaws analysis still looked at the entire site, or at least the entire lower part of the site, as I showed you on that map before, just so we cover the entire possible spectrum of development there. So what do we find in the new study? Well, we still find that both sites are suitable for a new WRF. No question about that. Rigetti, however, now ranks higher, for a lot of the reasons I've just pointed out. A lot of it has to do with the limitations on the current site or on the Rancho Colina site, and the fact that we now have better access to gaining control of the entire property at Rigetti. So those are both important considerations. There are some other issues to consider too. In buying, if the city were to pursue Rigetti, there's a cost there, but there's an offset because it's closer to the city, so the pipeline extension cost would be substantially less. We haven't figured out the details of that, but that's a consideration in the cost issues. Also important, and this came out of the hydrogeologic study, we found that there's a lot of limitations on where, if we were to put water into the ground in a reclamation scheme, there's a lot of limitations in the Morro Valley because of the soils and the bedrock and such. But the best area to do that, if we were to do that, is closer to the Narrows, which is to say where Morro Creek and Little Morro Creek come together, which is in the lower part of the valley, closer to the city. It's also closer to Rigetti than it is to Rancho Colina. So that's another consideration there as well. Now, we're also looking at visual issues as well, which is going to be a coastal concern, and that was put in as an appendix to the report. Appendix A, where Coastal had a pine back in 2013. Both sites could work, but we're going to be looking closely at visual issues among others. And back when we looked in 2014, the Rancho Colina site, we were looking at a more depressed part of the site, where you couldn't see it as well from the highway until you got right up on it. Now, we'd be in a more prominent spot, where you'd probably see it within a half mile coming down 41, if you're coming from the east. In Rigetti, of course, you could see it as well, but where you see that part of the site is really when you're on top of that site, relative to public views from Highway 41. So that's a little different than before. And then ultimately, there's more area and flexibility at Rigetti, if the city had control of the site, to really move things around and locate different facilities that may meet other city goals. So in short, that's why Rigetti now ranks higher. Here, I'm not going to go through this either, but this is a chart also from the updated report, which still shows the same kind of apples-to-apples from before, and I think that's an important consideration. We didn't look at any different criteria than we'd looked at in 2014. Same criteria, different circumstances now, come up with a different result. So what does this all mean before we get to the next steps? Generally speaking, from a schedule standpoint, from have we spun our wheels to get to this point? We've actually done quite a bit of work, especially on the facility master plan, that was not site-specific, and that was deliberate. That was deliberate because we knew that there were a lot of things we had to investigate on the sites to really nail it down to where we might be in a position to do what we're doing today. But it's also important that we learn a lot through the facility master planning process that had to do with technologies, had to do with other issues, treatment regimes and such, that we're not going to be site-specific and had to be done anyway. So we really don't find ourselves in a position where we've lost a lot of time there. And in terms of the Sequo work, we can't really dive into that in great detail, so we have that facility master plan well-understood. So all that's pretty good. So where does this leave us in terms of schedule, or what would happen next? Well, you're in a position now, WRFCAC was in a position to hear the same report, but without the benefit of the actual report last week, to have you decide to either reaffirm that you're good with Rancho Colina, as you had decided back in 2014, or to move to the Rigetti site. There are many options in terms of procedures of how to do this, but one would be to discuss it today and bring it back to council on the 23rd for a decision. Another would be to bring it back to WRFCAC at the beginning of March, at their regular meeting on the 1st, and then back to the council on the 8th. And a lot of that will have to do with WRFCAC's disposition relative to wanting to go into more detail on this, or whether that discussion happens tonight, and then you get public input today. So those are a couple of the options available to you. Once the site is selected, what happens? Then we really go into finishing the facility master plan based on that site that's selected, and really focus there. The good thing about having done all these studies on biology and cultural and hydrogeology is we've looked at both sites in equal detail, so we haven't lost any time there, as far as that goes. Sequo and NEPA will then follow, based on what the facility master plan looks at for a site. And overall, in terms of our schedule, we're still on track for a 2021 delivery, a February 2021 delivery, as we had presumed before. So nothing has really been lost in the long-term schedule on this. There's a lot of details in that, and of course, we're prepared to talk about that if you have questions. And Mike is also available to talk about issues related to ancillary developments on budget, or the different technical studies as we move forward within the context of the schedule. And with that, we send it back to you for your discussion.
Thanks for that report. And we do have public comment that we were going to go to. I think it might be beneficial to go to public comment and then bring it back to the two boards, and we can get into some questions and discussions then. So with that, we'll open up for public comment. For those who'd like to speak to this item, please come forward.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Linda Merrill. I just want to thank all of you. Some of you get paid to do this job, of course, and some of you don't get paid, and some of us get paid in a different way. But anyway, it makes our city a better one in which to live now, I think, is that you all have had, as our council, you've had the resolve to hang in there with some pretty difficult attacks and a lot of things that I think you didn't deserve. But anyway, for all of you who have spent all your time, and everyone in the audience that has followed along or tried to follow along, this isn't my field, and I have tried to understand what I could, but you've all done a great job of trying to, you know, let people who aren't engineers or whatever to be able to follow what you're doing. So I want to thank you all for all your work. I really appreciate it.
Thank you, Linda.
Good afternoon, Bill Martinie. And I did speak at the WRFCAC as far as when I heard that the McElvein property may not be your first site selection now. At the time, the original 17 sites were studied. There was one site that was supposedly studied, but it wasn't, and that's a 150-acre approximately tri-w site inside the city limits. It's a site that I think would work extremely well. It's extremely usable property, as opposed to the Rigetti that has about a five-acre usable piece, and the rest is fairly steep. So there's a multi-use purpose there. I think about 13 to 14 acres are actually zoned commercial or that on that site. That said, if you are switching to another site, I think you might also consider that site. Access into it, as opposed to coming off 41, as far as traffic and that, it's much safer. And then Cayucus, one of their preferred sites that wasn't on your list, or wasn't one of the top ones, was Toro Creek. Because at the time, it wasn't for sale. It's currently for sale. It's one of their preferred sites. It is also an excellent site. It borders very close to the Morro Bay city limits. I probably would recommend, if Cayucus goes that way, maybe getting a marriage counselor, getting you two guys back together again somehow, save money. It doesn't really make sense to have two plants side by side. Operating costs alone for this single site in Morro Bay now is $800,000 a year, which is huge. So if you have two side by side, to me, it makes sense, whichever site you choose, to try and get back together. That said, the Toro Creek site is also an excellent one, excellent access. There are some non-visible parts where you won't see it even from Toro Creek Road. And these are just two additional sites. Should you switch from McElvein and think about Rigetti, you might also think about these two other sites. So just thought I'd mention that.
Good afternoon, Marla J. Bruton-Sadowski, North Morro Bay. I have one question. I thought that the city was on track to build a water reclamation facility, and it's a necessity for any community. And now I'm wondering why, I guess not why, but how are you going to divide the costs of buying 240 acres for a water reclamation facility plant? The ratepayers are going to pay for that. How are you going to distinguish the amount of money that goes to the water reclamation facility? We don't have to build a maintenance yard. We certainly do not have to have, buy property so we can place dredge spoils on it, which is what the Harvard Advisory Board's been talking, and it's a way for them to figure out the conundrum they're in with the state marina back there. They can't, they don't have anywhere to dump the dredge spoils. So they want us to buy them property? And it's in a watershed, those are US waters, the Morro Creek and all that. I just, it just pretty much looks out of control to me right now, as far as a citizen thinking about my water and sewer bill. And I don't really think it's fair to the citizens to be piggybacking all these other items onto, "A bare necessity, we need to get the plant off the beach, stop dumping in the ocean, get away from sea level rise and flood." That's what we were, I thought we were doing here. So you can see, I'm flustered here.
Bob Keller, Morro Bay. Anyway, the way things look and the advantages that we can have with the Rigetti site seems to me would be the best way to go, because I don't know how much work has been put into this, but if we go to another location besides these two, is it going to put us behind the timeline? And it is also, it's going to be more expense. I think we should reconsider the way it looks. I'm sorry that we couldn't get the McLean property, McElvein property, but it seems like the Rigetti property would be the best way to go for all the advantages to the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob.
Tina Metzger, Nutmeg Avenue, Morro Bay. Right off the bat, I want to commend all the hard work from everyone that has worked on this particular topic, and the excellent report done by Rickenbacker Consulting. A few of my concerns as a property owner are, of course, right off the bat, with a sewage treatment plant right behind us. Our property values, of course, downwind orders. Our area is in major airstream, and the winds from the east howl through our neighborhood. And I'm concerned about the particulate matter that would be blown about. The traffic at Highway 41 and Highway 1, instead of going toward the existing, we will have more traffic going east to the Rigetti site. And I'm concerned about the noise, the possible noise. And so I just hope that these issues are addressed. I'm sure they will be. And also, the decision or the staff recommendation that the Rigetti property is now being very seriously looked at, needs to get out into the news, because none of my neighbors knew about this. But I appreciate the report being online and accessible. And again, I wish to thank all the people that have worked so hard on this. I know it's not easy, and I know that there are limits to sites that we can choose. So those are just some of my concerns. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Tina. Anybody else for public comment? Seeing none, I'll close public comment, bring it back to the two boards. Start it out for questions from council. Noah, you want to start off any questions, and then we'll work down and then pass it to our chairman down at the WRF CAC and go that way.
Okay, thank you. I do have a couple of questions. One is related to Ms. Bruton's question. I think it's an important one to address. We've talked about it before, but it has to do with accounting and management of funds in a scenario where we'd be looking at multiple benefits from a single site. So I'd like staff to briefly talk about how we would manage the sewer water funds with additional benefits and looking at the property as a whole, but also be able to break it out. So even in a scenario where Cayucus was involved, it would be equitable and trackable as to how the money was spent.
Yeah, I'll start with that. In fact, Mr. Mayor, if you'd like, I'll take a moment and just address a couple of those public comments.
That'd be great. Thank you.
So that is a great comment, and it's something we were going to need to do, we are going to need to do at any site that you choose. Should there have been a corp yard component, for example, at the Rancho Colina site, it's not only crucial, it's legally required for us to distinguish the amount of expenditure that is legally attributable to the Water and Sewer Fund and the amount that the general fund or other funds must pay. So should we go to either site, we will not only have to, but look forward to going through that drill to make sure we're doing appropriate accounting so that the Water and Sewer Fund does not receive any additional costs that are not appropriate and legally responsible to go to that fund. Just quickly on the cost purchase price of Ragetti. So our initial engineering estimates, which we think are right on, is that the additional cost of Ragetti above Rancho Colina, and neither of them are absolutely firm, but that the saved cost of pipeline, another 3,000 feet up the road, is essentially equal to the purchase price. So it's essentially a purchase price wash. It would cost roughly $2 million more to lay the pipeline from Ragetti up to Rancho Colina. If you choose to go to Ragetti, you won't have to spend that $2 million on pipeline, and that's a likely cost for the Ragetti property. Good thoughts on potential other sites, tri-W, Toro, wherever. As I noted in my opening, the fatal flaws analysis for both Rancho Colina and Ragetti are complete. So whichever site you choose, as soon as you say, "Go," that's it, then fatal flaws are complete, and we will press forward with facility master planning and environmental. Should we choose to go and reinvestigate some other place, then we will need to redo a process like we've done over the last year. I'm not saying it would take a year, but a process of comparing and contrasting, of doing fatal flaws analysis. So while other sites could bubble up, you will have to go through the process of determining how much more time do we want to wait before we start moving forward in order to investigate those and do the risk reward analysis. And finally, the great concerns from the property owner on Nutmeg, just as with Rancho Colina, we looked forward to working with the property owner of Rancho Colina and the property owners at the adjacent Mobile Home Park. So we look forward to working with property owners wherever you choose to place the water reclamation facility, to specifically look at odor and odor reduction or odor elimination is one of your stated goals for the project. Neighborhood compatibility, so what it looks like from the road, what it looks like from the side of the hill, if you're on Nutmeg. Particulate matter, those things, Mike specifically, and John can address those in more detail, should you like. I think that addresses most of the public comment and your comments, Councilmember Smucker.
Okay, thank you. And thanks for pointing out that neighborhood compatibility is a key goal that we would like to address. And you mentioned some, and noise was the other. Those are all encompassed in the neighborhood compatibility label. We have had some community workshops looking at architectural treatments that could help contain odors, noise, and essentially up here, it sounds like the direction we're going is more agricultural orientation and along with landscaping, that make it more like an orchard-type scenario. Quick question on water rights for the Ragetti site. I saw some discussion about that in the report. I've heard from one of the developers that was looking at the property about viable springs on site. And so if you can, just briefly talk about water and then how in the accounting, we would look at the current lease that the city has with the Ragetti property for the Nutmeg water tank, how that would be incorporated into a Ragetti property purchase?
Two of those things, and then turn it over to John or Mike on the water right specifics. So one other thing I should have mentioned on the property owner concerns is, should you choose to cite the WRF at Ragetti, one of the additional things we'll get to do this year is to go through a process to determine the appropriate and best use for the community of the several, well, 200 or so acres that won't be a water reclamation facility. So there is the potential to have that whole upper Ragetti sort of bowl there converted into a city park, into walking and biking trails. And that will obviously be an important and wonderful thing to do with those community members that are right there. So I could envision an access off of Nutmeg onto city walking and biking trails right on the Ragetti property above the WRF, or any number of other uses. But I would think an environmentally appreciated public use would certainly be the primary consideration. The city does pay $25,000 a year, adjust for inflation, to rent the land that our Nutmeg water tank goes on. So that is a cost that the city would no longer bear should we purchase the Ragetti property. John, you want to address water?
Sure, actually, Mike, or anyway.
Sure.
So the thing I would note is, both sites are currently served by groundwater, have wells associated with them. In our sense is, that would not be the driver in one direction or the other, because the quantity of water available at the two sites wouldn't be that significantly different for the type of decision that we're going to make. But both have some water right attached.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for that good overview. Mr. Rick, I heard you say specifically that, given the fact that we've had to go back and reevaluate a second site that at present that is not going to interfere with the delivery date of February 21, 2021, February 21st, if you want.
That's correct. You know, one thing that we built into the schedule at the beginning was the possibility that things like this might come up. Obviously, in a five-year program, you've got a lot of things that can happen. Our presumption, and Mike correct me if I'm wrong, was that we'd be in a position to have a facility master plan done in the spring to early summer. In any case, that was before we went through this path. So we're still on that path right now.
Yeah, too, one point. When we originally put the schedules together, say, I want to say roughly a year ago, we first started developing the schedule, the assumption had been that the facility master planning process would take roughly a year. Blackwood Beach had come in with an expedited schedule and trimmed it down to roughly seven months. So we wound up, you know, one of the statements we've all kind of had internally is that any float belongs to the city, basically. So we've taken advantage of the fact in that schedule that we had allowed ourselves a little bit more time to get that facility master plan done. So it doesn't hurt our schedule overall. We're still within that roughly a year timeframe we'd initially set aside.
I listened to the WRF CAC meeting, and the hydrogeological information was quite fascinating. And given that, I don't think it differs much from one site to the other, but could you, just for my edification, briefly speak to effluent discharge and opportunities there? And I ask that in consideration of the gentleman, Bill, who came up and talked about potentially two other sites, and I'm certainly not recommending that we go to other sites. But because of the hydrogeology and the limited ability to, I guess, use effectively that effluent, what considerations are there for it, given the site selection that we have?
So, yeah, that's a good question. So the work that FUGO recently did, folks haven't had a chance to look at that, is they, for the first time, were able to pull together all of the different sources of data for well logs, for monitoring wells and drinking water wells, all the information that was available from the Department of Water Resources. They took that information and used it to develop cross-sections through the groundwater basin and try to determine what the major characteristics were of the different parts of the aquifer based on that information. So kind of a desktop review. So the general conclusions were that it is difficult to find surface percolation opportunities, where you could build percolation ponds and discharge at the surface and have that water ultimately get into your groundwater basin. That was a challenge on the east part of the basin, upstream of what they call the Narrows. And as you recall from some of the exhibits and reports we've had in the FAST, the Narrows is just what it sounds like. It's where the two, Morro Creek and Little Morro Creek, come together, and it goes through a real narrow area of confining bedrock. So they determined that upstream of that, difficult to find opportunities based on what they saw. Now, right at the Narrows, though, there's some evidence of some very coarse material. And so one of the opportunities could be to look at either injection or some sort of a recharge system there that could get water into the aquifer. That's one of the... Now, with each one of these, there are a number of regulatory constraints and physical constraints you have to look at. So one of the issues with any sort of groundwater recharge is what your distance is to your potable water wells, your travel time to get there. So that question has to be resolved through some groundwater modeling and groundwater analysis, as to whether you could do that or not, whether both the city's municipal wells and the privately owned potable wells in the area are sufficient travel time away, or how to deal with that. So another option is a seawater intrusion barrier. This is something that's done in Orange County, for example. The concept is you highly treat wastewater, and you inject it in the ground as a barrier between the ocean and your freshwater wells. And in this case, what that could look like could be a series of injection wells running, say, along in Barkadero, where your seawater wells are now, that served the desal plant in the past. So you could look at injection wells there. Could be an example of another way. What that could do for you is protect the city's wells and improve the probability that they'd be able to produce water for a long time. And so it could provide both additional supply and also protection from seawater intrusion. That could be a second use of the water. Third use of the water could be agricultural irrigation or irrigation to the golf course or irrigation to other small city users. That's a third opportunity. There's a lot of that opportunity within Morro Valley. There are water rights and different negotiations and arrangements that need to be made within the folks taking the water and also with their neighbors, because if you make more water available, then, you know, you want to be able to... Our direction from council has been develop alternatives for the highest and best use of the water. So we want to make sure that, first, the city water supply is benefited by that through that in-lu recharge concept that we discussed over the last year or so. So that's another opportunity. So there are several opportunities there. The next step for FUGO, really, is to lay those out for us, and we see bringing that back to WRF CAC as, you know, kind of an overview of what the constraints and the opportunities might be, and then work with WRF CAC and with council on what those next steps are for the field work and the modeling and the work to verify that.
If I could briefly, to one broader issue and then to summarize that, the broader issue is that most of our water infrastructure is around the Morro Valley. That's where most of our wells are, where the seawater wells are. So that is another argument for Morro Valley over, for example, tri-W or Toro, especially with things being relatively equal. If there was one site that had a huge, huge benefit, then it might be worth it to pipe around. But most of our water infrastructure is around the Morro Valley. Those are our best-producing wells. Since the thing we're talking mostly about tonight is comparing, contrasting these two sites, neither of them looks great for percolation. Nowhere in the Morro Valley looks great for surface percolation. And if you start thinking about a highest and best use, again, if both sites are pretty close and you're looking for fine-tuned things, if we're thinking about highest and best use of the water, perhaps the highest and best use is so that we can use it as drinking water again, whether that's direct potable or direct injection, those things are closer to Ragetti. Ragetti's 3,000 feet closer to our wells, to possible seawater intrusion, direct injection systems, to possible use of direct potable reuse after we get state regulations. If agriculture were our highest and best use, well, Rancho Colina is probably closest to the agriculture highest and best use. But if that were the highest and best use, but I think you've made it clear that highest and best use is to be able to reclaim this water and use it to perhaps even get off of state water, so that we could, eight years, 10 years down the road, be paying $300 an acre foot for water instead of $1,600 plus.
My highest and best use is to get the greatest dollar value for it and have that decrease the overall cost to the end-line user, the community, and to be that whatever site it is, that becomes the issue. My last question is, because this was new news to me, given both sites, this hydrogeological information that came out at the meeting, does that type of geology lend itself to, just overall, and you've described various mechanisms for utilization of the water, overall, to higher costs for use of the water on the Morro Valley sites?
The lowest-cost alternative, I mean, I guess the best way to answer this, the lowest-cost alternative would be if we could find surface percolation opportunities. And because of the regulatory view of that, and, you know, whether that's defined as a... The question is whether that's defined as groundwater recharge or not. And it depends on your distance between the bottom of your percolation ponds and your groundwater. But, you know, the least expensive option is to find those opportunities. Now, those opportunities are hard to find anywhere, but one possibility could be, you know, a discharge to Morro Creek, immediately upstream of the percolating area, because the percolating area is in the stream bed. So there are a number of... We have not ruled out the ability to do that. And in terms of either one of those sites relative to each other, it would, you know, other than being closer to the Narrows, might be better if that worked out. At this point, for where we're at with what we understand, the groundwater basin and what we understand, the reuse opportunities, they're comparable to each other.
Matt?
Yeah, John, I think this...
Yeah, John, I think this, although, either on you, President Lance, this, my question deals with the difference in soil types of the two sites. Talking about the McElvein property and the new eight-acre parcel compared to the bottom there at the Rigetti property, could you explain the soil type, and then construction, and what may, how those two would compare?
I'll start, and then Mike can get technical on you. The difference, basically, is where you're looking at, on the McElvein property, the upland eight acres has very thin rocky soils. So, you're talking about having to, in fact, when FUGO went out there, they had to do a lot of pushing, just to get it into the ground there. So, that translates to more difficulty to put something there, it's possible, but there's a cost issue. On the Rigetti site, we're looking at trying to take advantage of the lowest, deepest soils there. So, from a pure apples-to-apples, it's going to be an easier go at Rigetti, just in general.
Great. Christine?
Okay, probably the most important question is, do we explain to the viewing public why we all have these beads on, before I put mine on? Have we had a chance to explain, like, why everybody has got beads?
We haven't done that, no.
Okay, because it's odd, right? But, yeah, these were gifts for Mardi Gras, everyone who's not here. So, I came in a little late, too. Okay. So, now that the most important question is over, because you'll see, the WF CAC members have the two. So, first of all, great to see new people out, re-engaging with everyone, appreciate that. There is a new website, is it live, and how can people get on it for the project?
We're working through some of the kinks. So, I would say, over the next week, it will be more robust and more reliable. So--
Okay, so it is Moro, it's morobaywrf.gov?
Moro Bay, wrf.com.
Dot com?
Yep.
Okay. You know, actually, I did sign up for it, I did find it. I just, it's a question I knew the answer to. And I'm actually on it, and it is .com, yeah. So, you can sign up.
And to then, all of these updates are on the city website on hot topics. So, hot topic number four, right now, is water reclamation facility project updates. And they'll always be there as well.
Okay, great. And then, talking about some of the studies that have been done, just briefly, so, you mentioned the report, that there were no fatal flaws on either site, Rigetti or Rancho Colina. But, would you say there are significant red flags that you would want to mention?
Significant red flags? No, there are things that have to be worked around, in both cases. Let's talk biology, for example. On both sites, you have streams that end up, call them streams, call them drainages, that end up in Morro Creek. So, they're potentially jurisdictional waters, and could be considered coastal streams. And that would be, so Coastal Commission would get involved, in that case, on both sites. So, we're talking about, in the case of Rigetti, one of those going right next to one of the best parts of, to develop. So, we have to look at that, in terms of how you would design, either around that, or work with Coastal, and the city on permitting issues for that. But, again, there's enough flexibility there to work around that, I think. Rancho Colina, you have similar issues, although on the eight acres, we'd be limited to, you're in a position to more or less avoid a lot of that, because you're on the upland area. Cultural resources, you're looking at a sensitivity issue on the two sites. There's a lot of sensitivity in Moro Valley in general, and we know about a lot of it. And a lot of it has to do with, along the corridor of 41, even closer to the city. So, for either site, you're going to deal with pipeline issues there. But, on the two sites, they're both considered sensitive at one level or another. In the case of Rancho Colina, part of the site is of lower sensitivity, and part of high sensitivity. On Rigetti, it's all considered moderately sensitive. But, there's no sites that have been unearthed, that we have to deal with specifically at this point. So, there's that. Hydrogeology, I think, is more an off-site issue. We know that onsite perk ponds for both sites aren't going to work all that well. But, again, there's other options, as Mike explained. And then, on geotech, the soils issue, we just talked about that. So, those, that's the realm of what we're talking about. It's all designable, but they all present challenges.
Okay, great. Thank you. So, we talked about, currently, at the Rancho Colina site, there are eight acres that are available to us for design of a WRF and function. So, are we looking at the same kind of space on Rigetti, or do we have more flexibility? I mean, I know, from public comment, there was a mention that, oh, that's a constrained site as well. But, could you elaborate on what might be the case there?
Sure. Yeah, in general, there's a lot more flexibility on Rigetti, mainly because the city would have access to the entire site. But, talking about physical constraints, it's true that there's a flat area down at the bottom, and then it terraces up. And there are areas farther up the hill. But, but in terms of the WRF itself, we'd try to co-locate things as much as we could. We've looked at that, at a little bit of preliminary detail, and it looks like, you know, you'd have to do some grading. You'd have to do some grading at either site. But, it's, you know, something that can be designed. And in fact, at the end of the day, the grading issues relate to cost, but they don't relate to a fatal flaw in the ability to move things around. You do have some flexibility on Rigetti.
So, the Rigetti site, compared to the currently offered eight acres at Rancho Colina, which is, was just described as higher elevation and more bedrock, the Rigetti site has more low, flat ground than the Rancho, than what's on the table at Rancho Colina. Also, your previous question about, about things we need to work around, or outstanding issues, in the presentation, but not super highlighted, and I can go into some detail of what the details are. But, you have, we have negotiated an MOU for the purchase of Rancho, of the Rigetti site. That is a fully executed, signed, and recorded MOU. And so, that is done. So, you have at your op, you have an option to purchase Rigetti, and all the negotiation is done. We would still, we would still need to negotiate details for the potential purchase of the eight acres at Rancho Colina. If it's useful at times, I can give you the details on that MOU.
Yeah, that was my next question. It said, "Final offer for Mr. McElvein?", question mark? Right. So, I was wondering if we were at the end of the road there, with the eight acres. I think everyone would probably like to know that, and I don't expect that Mr. McElvein would need to publicly mention it. But, you know, certainly, we would want to know that the negotiation was, you know, at the end for him. Specifically, because he does have that small plant there, that is in existence, and, you know, that would be something to get offline. But, that's why, I think, I would like, at some point, to hear, if we can, as appropriate, as much as appropriate, you know, if we are at the end of our negotiation with Mr. McElvein.
We've had, John and Mike, and others before them, have had very good discussions, negotiations with Mr. McElvein and his family. The most recent ones, last week, were quite positive. And, positive in the sense of good communication. We believe that the currently offered eight acres is, is all the McElveins are willing to offer at this point. We would need to negotiate some other details. There's some other sort of restrictions, they'd like to, as was noted, no corp yard, limit traffic on and off 41, other restrictions. But, where they are, it's the eight acres, and that's the, that's what's on the table. And we asked if, if it might go beyond that, and it doesn't appear that it will. The details on the, on the Rigetti MOU are that, that we made a $25,000 payment to essentially take that property off the market for six months, in order to do fatal flaws analysis. As you heard tonight, fatal flaws analysis is essentially done. But, so we have six months to make this decision, if we want to go to Rigetti or not. Once we, at the end of six months, we need to put down $100,000 of earnest money, just like the purchase of a, of a house. That $100,000 is, will apply to the purchase price. And then, that buys us an additional 400 days. So, now we have six months, plus 400 days. That's the, in that time period, we would need to complete the environmental review, complete the environmental document, and we would then be able to purchase the property, once the environmental view is complete, at the end of that six months, plus 400 days. Or, anytime before that, anytime in that period, that the environmental is complete.
Okay, that's helpful. So, going, getting a little to the technical question, then. So, we talked, discussion was made about the Moro Valley, not at this point, that surface percolation was our challenge. Speaking to neighborhood compatibility, and the way things look, or odors that are created, is surface percolation, perhaps, that challenge, not being able to have wide-open, I'm guessing, ponds, or things like that? How could the challenge, in one way, of not having great surface percolation, be a benefit, in another way, in terms of plant design, to meet neighborhood, neighborhood compatibility characteristics? Or, you know, certainly, things we want to make sure we can manage for neighbors?
Sure. I think, I think the, you know, the, the surface percolation is, it can create, if you allow ponding to occur, it can create concerns with, you know, with mosquitoes, and vectors, and that sort of thing. It can. Not necessarily, doesn't always, because if you can find a good sandy pond bottom, then the water can percolate fairly quickly, particularly when it's treated to a very high level. But, that can be a concern. Now, the advantage of the technologies that we've analyzed so far, and you recall the workshops on liquid treatment, and even the workshops on solid treatment, is that we're, by nature of the directions we're looking at for reuse of the water, we're looking at technologies that are relatively small footprint, just by nature of the treatment goals. And they lend themselves well to odor treatment, and odor containment, and also to, to noise containment. So, when you've made the decision that you're looking at groundwater recharge, or any of these uses that are going to require some sort of salt removal, you've pushed yourself into a series of treatment technologies that are fairly, that are good neighbor treatment systems, at the end of the day.
Okay, great. Thank you very much for your answers. Thanks for your report, and that's all. Thanks.
All right, thank you. And keeping an eye on the time, because I would like to pass it off to our WRFCAC board, and we're five after five, so try to do that. I'll just try to get to my questions quickly. We had the comment about the Tri-W and Toro property. So, when we do an EIR, that will flesh out, you know, any other additional sites as well? Can you speak to that a little bit?
Sure. When an EIR is done, you can look at alternative sites. You have to consider the possibility of them. Those could be alternative sites looked at in the EIR. It's also worth noting that, in the case of the Toro site, we did look at that in some detail in the previous studies at the end of 2013, concluding at that time, it wasn't as good as the Moro Valley sites. Among the reasons for it, in the case of Moro Bay, was cost and distance from the city. And there are also some challenges that were cultural and biological resource challenges there as well. Not to say it couldn't have worked, but it wasn't as good. But, we could look at that as an alternative site. In the case of the Tri-W site, we did look at a slightly adjacent site. The reason we didn't look at the larger 150 acres, was because it was slated for other kinds of development, residential and such. So, it was not really considered on the radar screen for a facility of this kind, at that time. But, again, that could be looked at in the EIR, and we can scope that out as appropriate, through the scoping process.
Okay. So, in, going to a site selection, as discussed for Rigetti, and as it was laid out with the MOU, and purchasing a property, when we get that far along in the process, and there's any other information from an EIR, we're committing ourselves to a site, based on the process we're engaged in right now. So, you know, can you explain how we would navigate through that, if we're committing ourselves to the Rigetti site, both in a financial way, and then other, you know, information may steer us someplace differently? Or is there just a level of confidence that we're on the right path?
Yeah, I think there's a lot of all that. I think the idea is, we've done a lot of due diligence to get us to this point, where we feel pretty confident that it would work at Rigetti, it would work at Rancho Colina, in a way, it could work elsewhere. I do think that there's always the possibility, and an EIR, which, at the end of the day, is a disclosure document, more than anything else, to help you understand the details of your decision in going forward. They're not usually site selection documents, though you do look at alternative sites, as a matter of trying to see if there's ways to minimize environmental impacts. But, all that to say, you could, at some point, make the decision through the EIR process, gosh, there's another site that's a whole lot better, and go down that path. The fact would be, if the city enters, it keeps the option open for another 400 days, plus six months, we expect to be through the environmental process before that time. So, if you did go a different direction, you wouldn't have committed to having bought the property at that point.
Okay, good. That answers that. And then, as far as the recharge capability, it struck me that, as an example, if our existing wastewater treatment plant was converted to a water reclamation facility, where would we be looking for that potential reuse capabilities? If we were looking to recharge, would we still be going to the Narrows as a place to do that? So, in other words, whether or not the site might be located at Rancho Colina, or Rigetti, or at its existing location, we're going to have to find a point where we can recharge, if that's one component of it, or reuse. Can you, can you talk about that? I speak to that, because Pismo Beach, they're going to water reclamation, but they have an existing wastewater treatment plant, and they're going to be transferring, they're going to be transferring that product to a location for recharge. So, maybe you can just respond to that.
Sure, sure, I'd be glad to. So, one, one general concept that you wind up, that is true with many water reclamation projects, is you never find the ideal site, both for the plant itself, and to where you're going to get rid of the water. You get as close as you reasonably can. But, it's difficult to find the right characteristics for both on one property, in those cases. So, if we were staying at the existing treatment plant site, would we still be looking at Moro Valley? Most likely, because that's your groundwater supply. And, and also, the many opportunities for reclamation. One of the advantages to the sites in the Moro Valley, also, that we've, we've, is discussed in the report, is the concept that it's also very close to your existing collection system. So, from that perspective, the, either Rancho Colina, or the McElvein property, compared to other locations, are fairly close to your existing collection system. So, you can build a lift station near the existing plant, force main up to it. But, you would be looking at the same suite of alternatives, if you're at the existing plant site, or if you were at Rigetti.
Okay. And one final question, I'd like to turn it to the WRFCAC board. Can you just refresh us on our communication with the county and LAVCO, as far as this project goes?
Sure, I'd be glad to. In the case of LAVCO, we've had periodic meetings and discussions with them. I'm sure others have, but I have personally, mostly with the staff, to keep them apprised of the situation, get a feel, would it work, where would it work in the Moro Valley in general? And the basic feedback is, Rigetti or Rancho Colina could both work. They present a little different scenario. In the case of Rigetti, there's an advantage, LAVCO likes that, because it's contiguous to the city. That's an easier annexation issue. And in fact, it allows the city to do other things on the site, other than just public facilities, because it's contiguous. In the case of Rancho Colina, you can have an island annexation, as was explained to me, meaning, an annexation that's not contiguous to the city, but only for public facilities. So, if there was going to be any other non-public facility, such as a wastewater facility, then that's a little more limiting. But, again, can they both be done? Yes, they could. In the case of the county, the only coordination is to keep them apprised of the situation, more or less, of what's going on. But, again, if this all gets permitted and annexed to the city, then the city's in a position to control the regulatory process at that point.
And the annexation, just through the LAVCO process, or is there a 218 vote through the city?
I'm not entirely sure. I'll have to get back to you on that.
Great question on other regional entities. I was just looking at the Coastal Commission's 2000, December 13 letter, responding to the options report. And two points that are sort of germane in this is, one, they are, they spoke positively about Moro Valley sites, because of the proximity to the best and highest water reclamation use. And also, they specifically point out, with Rancho Colina, that there could be a benefit at Rancho Colina, if the, if the WRF were sighted in that lower elevation area, the visual impacts. But, but they specifically note the visual impacts of that lower, flatter area, and that's not the area that is, that is currently available to the city.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
You're asking a question about a 218 vote?
Is there, to annex through the LAVCO process, is there, is it just through the LAVCO process, or is it going to be a vote-- Is it just through the LAFCO process, or is it going to be a vote of the community?
I'm going to answer that in two ways. One, by the language of the ordinance that was passed many years ago, it doesn't have to go to a vote if it's for public purpose, which is what this is. The other answer is a more involved answer that we may not need to get to, because it's a public purpose.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Niedadia, I'll turn it over to the WRF CAC board. Thank you.
Thank you for that, Mr. Mayor. And we did have the benefit of going over this presentation this month already, but I imagine we still have some questions now that we have the report in our hands. I would just like to ask staff for clarification as we couch our questions here. You did earlier on say there is a desire to see potentially a vote from our advisory committee on our level of comfort with moving forward with Rigetti tonight, or having it come back for consideration again in our March meeting?
So the, we're looking forward to the council and the WRF CAC having a discussion tonight, and you may not need to make a decision tonight, but we see sort of two options. We could bring this to the city, this question to the city council for decision at their council meeting in two weeks from tonight, or we could delay that and bring it to the city council in four weeks, which would give another opportunity to bring it to the WRF CAC, or bring it to the city council in four months, which would give four months of discussion. And I'm just, of course, time is money and all of these things. But so whatever the consensus of the group is, I'm sure I'll get great direction on what to do as a staff as next steps.
All right, appreciate that clarity. Val, I'll turn to you first, if you have any questions or comments on...
I guess my question is...
Val, can you speak a little closer into the mic, please?
My questions have to do with whether or not the Narrows can actually accommodate a million acre, I mean, a million gallons of water a day, particularly given the issues with the proximity to potable water sources, and when we're going to be able to get that particular issue figured out. And then the what-if, if we have to move to some other location because of well issues? How much water do we really need for seawater intrusion to form that blockade? Again, I keep thinking that a million gallons of water a day is a lot of water. So that's just, those are some concerns I have in regards to what I think might, and hopefully we're going to, it's not going to be as limited, but to me, it seems like we are limited. Another issue that you brought up was discharge into Morro Creek, and there are permitting issues with that, and I believe FUGO brought this up before in earlier reports, that because of the permitting issues, and once you start dumping into a creek and recharge, you know, into a creek, it's considered a habitat enhancement, and it's difficult to stop that water. Say, if we wanted to use the water at a later purpose for potable reuse, once we have all the state legislative, state guidance and things like that in order, if we wanted to use it for another purpose at a later date, it becomes, I think, difficult to shut that water off. The other question I had has to do with costs associated with getting reclaimed water to, for agricultural purposes to the farmers. I'm not against doing that, but who pays for that? Is that a cost that would be borne by the ratepayer and the people, the residents of Morro Bay? Is that going to be a shared cost? I know that, so anyway, those are my concerns.
Let me see...
Want to address any of those?
No, I can address in one blanket statement. Those are all great concerns that are the central focus of the reclamation master plan that we're going to be undertaking over the next several months. But obviously, it's a complex suite of things, from the habitat issues, to who pays what, to what's the best way to do this? Is there a combination? What are the regulatory challenges? We need to get deep into that. We're not there yet.
One of the things that I see coming out of all of this is that with a million gallons a day, we're probably still going to be using the ocean offfall for some time in the future, until we can totally work out all of the reclamation opportunities that might be out there in the near future and in the far future, the distant.
Yeah, that's a good point. And to kind of jump in on a few of these items. So first, the, definitely the hydrogeology is going to be a big focus for us over the next nine months to a year, really, as part of the master reclamation plan and also the work FUGO is doing. We're going to be working side by side on those issues, coming up with the questions about cost for pipelines, for different alternatives, and cost for facilities overall. So those are important decisions to make. Based on what we've seen so far, we feel like that the siding decision is, that's obviously the first step. The hydrogeology, all the questions you've raised are very important, and part of what you'll see from FUGO over the next couple of WRF CAC meetings is what those options look like, what the pros and cons are for city water supply, because we're just not there yet. But we recognize those have to be explored in detail. In terms of the difficulty in shutting water off to a creek, that's a very good point, and that's something we're very aware of. You know, several of us have been involved with the city of San Luis Obispo and the challenges they've had with trying to take water that they're using to, that has been flowing to San Luis Obispo Creek for years, and then trying to redirect that for a reuse program. So it's something we're, that we're sensitive to. We're looking at a similar, we're doing a similar analysis with Los Osos CSD right now, because they're looking at a similar opportunity for creek discharge. And so it's something that the regulatory agencies are all aware of, and that we're aware of as well. And it's something that, it's just, there are, any one of these alternatives we discuss may not be the alternative. It may be a, it's most likely going to be a combination of several. And what I've seen with most water resource, water reuse programs, whether they're regional or for one agency or whatever, is that phasing it over time is often the most cost-effective way to go, because it's difficult to work through all the issues and get all the questions answered, often, you know, day one, because it requires coordination with a lot of different, with a lot of different potential users. It requires coordination with the regulatory agencies, environmental analysis. So those are good points, and those are things that we will be hitting, you will be seeing a lot from us over the next year.
Ginny, do you have any questions?
I had four main concerns, and I think most of my concerns have been addressed. I was concerned about the cost and the neighborhood compatibility, and just what you had mentioned, the permitting constraints, because you had mentioned that the most buildable portion is located directly in the path of the main drainage traversing the property, which could impact waters of the US and the state. Could you just clarify, so is it about $2 million then that we're talking about to purchase 251 acres?
It was last appraised at $2.4 million in 2012. And the way the MOU is written and the law is written is that the property be appraised, and the city cannot, will pay and cannot pay more than appraised value.
Okay. How receptive is the owner to accept a lease agreement? Are we interested in that, or just purchasing the property outright?
I'll jump in on that. When you're looking at a facility that's on the short end, 50 years plus, a lease agreement does put the city at some risk.
So my last concern was about seismic hazards. The report stated that the Cambria Fault crosses the northern part of the property, trending in a northwesterly direction, but it says since the fault does not cross the site proposed for the new WRF, the potential for ground rupture due to seismic activity is considered to be low. Can you elaborate on that?
Sure, I'll tackle that one. So fairly large, 260-acre, plus or minus, property. Part of that fault runs across kind of the high part of the property, not where we're looking at locating the WRF facility. So the fault does not run through, say, the center of the property or anything like that. It runs across one edge of it.
Okay, so that's not going to be a major concern for us in the future?
It also continues on and then runs closer, actually, to the Rancho Colina property and crosses the Morro Valley, much further up the road.
In terms of biological resources, the study said that approximately 55 acres of the 251-acre Rigetti site was studied. So how representative do you think that would be if we decided to do a corporation yard or other things? Is that fairly representative, the entire site?
I think it's very representative of, in fact, it covers the entire site that's likely buildable. We had the biologists look at everything that wasn't super steep, which was the lower part. Now, there are parts on the upper part of the site which may or may not be suitable for some use that's not WRF-related, and we didn't look way up the hill. But anything that's related to the WRF, I think we covered the entire area pretty representatively.
Thank you.
Bill?
If it's a choice between Rigetti and Rancho Colina, I think it's hands down Rigetti, and it can do it just easily with dollars. And when you consider nutmeg tank, and you consider the pipelines up the hill, and maybe another lift station, and the capitalized energy costs that you would require to get up to Rancho Colina, I think Rigetti is hands down. However, if you listen to Bill Martin and Tina Metzger, Bill Martin says there's a Tri-W site where there's 150 acres of much more usable land you would dump down into the Choral Valley. Maybe you have a much different gradient of soil where you could get percolation, and Tina Metzger's neighborhood issues disappear, and you don't have any LAFCO issues at all because you're in the city limits. So if you're staying in the Morro Valley, I think it's Rigetti. If you want to consider another site at this stage of the game, I would consider Tri-W and give that an analysis if you're willing to spend the time. So I do think, though, that I think you owe the citizens, you, city council, owe the citizens a water master plan. We have, as you know, state water and Morro and Choral wells, and we have a D cell plant, and now we have an opportunity to reclaim a lot of water, and what are we going to do with it? And I think that, at least me, from my position on this committee, need more direction from you on how much you want to spend, and how much you are dedicated to reclaiming this water, and whether we could sell it and defer the cost to state water users or other small cities that were mentioned. So I think that if I had to get anything out of this meeting, I would really like to hear from the city council on a water master plan.
Thank you, Bill. Richard?
I got a question for you, John. On your staff report, in your recommendations, you say water reclamation, citizen advisory recommendation, you said the input from the WRF CAC during the meeting suggested general concurrence with the information provided. At the last meeting, we got a presentation from FUGO, and what exactly do you mean that was a general concurrence? And then this was like, pretty much, the first time we heard how serious you're looking at Rigetti.
I think, that's a good question. I think what we heard was, there was no decision or action taken by WRF CAC. I think what we heard was a lot of receptive, "That sounds interesting," or "That could be good." Yes, we want to hear more, but it sounded like it was on the right track, but that was only a consensus field. There was obviously a lot of variation in the discussion. So if I had to put a finer point on it, that's how I'd put a finer point on it. But you can characterize that as you see fit, and through the minutes, I think it would explain it in more detail.
Yeah, I kind of feel like it was a general, I don't know about a concurrence, that's kind of a mischaracterization, maybe there was a discussion. Regarding hydrology, I want to bring that up a little bit here. On the FUGO presentation, Mike, you just mentioned that you have to, they have to study if we have injection at the Narrows. Now, just so we're clear on the hydrology, what's your operational definition of the Narrows, the boundary? Because that seems to be moving around. My understanding, let me just tell you where my understanding is. My understanding is, is the Narrows on the hydrology are near the intersection of Main Street and Highway 1, Highway 1 and 41, and the boundary layers there. Is that correct?
Yeah, when I use the term Narrows, I'm using kind of a general area. So it doesn't necessarily mean it's, you know, the term that the hydrogeologists have used in the past studies has been really referring to that area right where the two creeks come together. And whether that's 500 feet downstream or 500 feet upstream, it's kind of that general area.
Okay, but when, as it relates to pumping city wells, it's a specific, pretty specific, how that water from the Morro Valley enters, okay?
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay. And given that, I had asked the FUGO representative if he was using Cleeth and Associates data regarding that, and he said yes. Okay, so there is data regarding what you mentioned, we still have to study the distance and time to the city wells. There's data there, and I don't think the people should be paying twice over for a duality on studies there. However, however, Cleeth study, when they did their nitrate study, there was an issue there, okay? One of them was an issue on taking a study out of context and changing the meaning of it, okay? That was a study with regards to exfiltration and nitrate issues, okay? And so when we're talking about injecting water from a reclamation facility into the Narrows, we're talking about addressing those issues. One of the things that the FUGO study showed was that we don't have enough percolation to get water clean enough where we could just strictly pump, clean, pump it right out of the aquifer from the time it goes down the Morro Valley. That would only address the nitrate issues from the farming. What I'm talking about is the nitrates coming from the sewage entering the Morro Basin aquifer. Now, Mr. Buckingham, this is more towards you. Now, you have information that, you weren't maybe here at the time, but there was a study from the city, the city had put out a letter stating they ruled out sewage as a contributor to the nitrates in the Morro Basin aquifer. You have that letter. And that was dispersed all over the state, to the state water boards, to the regional boards, to the county public health. Five years later, they were proved wrong with the sucralose test. So what I'm concerned about, and I'm kind of favoring the Morro Valley to address those issues, but you mentioned that there is a letter from the CCC about the Morro Valley. There's also a letter from the CCC to fix the sewer infrastructure around there. And so one of the things that we need to be addressing is that in a cohesive manner, okay? And... okay? And not ignoring that fact, because right now, what we have is a situation that I feel is being, a public health situation that I feel is being ignored and needs to be addressed at the same time we're dealing with this issue.
Dale, any questions?
Yeah, I got one. In this technical memorandum that we received December 2014, and we also did a site visit to the site, the footprint of the plant was approximately about eight acres. And then we come back a year later, and now you guys wanted 21 acres? Why the change? Why, you know, what happened? I'm sure that the landowner was expecting a small footprint on his land, and then it changed.
Let me tackle that one. So when we did that site layout, the purpose of that site layout was a functional equivalent to the California Men's Colony facility. So it was a different treatment, I mean, it was an oxidation ditch, it was a whole different set of treatment goals than what we were looking at at California Men's Colony. So it was a different kettle of fish than the treatment goals that we're looking at meeting now for grant recharge, et cetera. So that's one difference, but John.
Just to add to that, and just to remind people, we looked at it that way because we were comparing that to the California Men's Colony site for a cost comparison purpose. So we thought we'd use that footprint on that site to come up with a comparable idea. Was not the intent to do that necessarily, it was really an exercise just to compare costs.
And then the other piece of this, too, is the ability to use it for other city facilities, like, for example, co-locating with the city water plant, city desires to do that in the future, or co-locating with the corporation yard. So that's how we, you know, get from the eight acres to the, you know, in the neighborhood of 20 acres, are those additional uses. In addition to the fact that we're looking at a different treatment regime than what we were looking at in that study.
So the added acres is mostly because of the corp yard being moved and different treatment?
That's correct.
Okay.
That said, the available eight acres then are different from the available eight acres now. So that piece drawn on that map, those eight acres are no longer available.
Right.
Those are the eight acres that we based the fatal flaws analysis on, that Coastal referred to for visibility, that was the low ground already graded, not the higher rocky ground. So there are functionally two different sites there, two different eight acre sites.
But the other eight acre site is where you wanted to put the corp yard. So moving it over and putting a sewer treatment plant there isn't still excavation and everything else in the same spot as you wanted to put a corp yard?
The, one of the differences is, if we look, what we're looking at is, we're looking at, the first objective is to find the spot for the wharf. So when we say we have eight acres in a relatively flat land, and then we say we're going to get eight acres on a hilly piece of property, the amount of usable space we have automatically goes down, because what we've got is we're cutting into rock, we're flattening out the site, and we have slope stability, retaining walls, and other issues we've got to deal with. So that eight acres is not as useful to us as the eight acres down in the bottom land. That's the first issue. We had looked at using, you know, at using the majority of that property, but, you know, but that's not available. It's not available to get both. It's really that one piece on top of the hill.
Wasn't that the original idea of putting the wharf there and not a corp yard? That was brought on on a later date.
I think what we're talking about, first of all, is you're looking at information that's outdated at this point relative to where we are today. I think the original idea has always been to build a water reclamation facility, and how much land that would take would be a function of the kinds of technologies you could use, whether they need ox ditches or whatever. And then there are a series of city objectives that if they could be met, would be great if possible. So the degree to which that, what you're referring to, if we could achieve other objectives like a corp yard and such, is it possible? Really, that was an exercise to see if it's even possible. So we go back to looking at water reclamation facilities as a prime objective, and we say it's a different cat on the one eight acres versus the other. And what we're doing with the other issues is really an academic exercise to see if it was possible.
I guess considering where we are now, there's eight acres potentially available. We'd need to negotiate for it on the higher, rockier ground at Rancho Colina with no possibility of corp yard or anything else, and there is sufficient land at Rancho Colina with an executed MOU, I'm sorry, at Rigetti with eight or so acres of good flat ground, and then plenty of additional acres to do other things with.
Thank you.
Just real quick to follow up on that last question. We've mentioned the significant increase in cost in the land acquisition for the Rigetti versus the other site, but is that primarily due to the increased acreage? And if so, would that be available at some point in the future for subdivision and that, where you could recoup some of that delta cost as opposed to just being offset by the other, you know, the distance in the pipeline?
Absolutely. So I think that purchase cost will generally be recouped by the reduced construction cost alone, not considering then the increased operational costs, the environmental costs of pumping sewage for the next 50 years, 3,000 feet further uphill. And then the 225 acres that won't have a water reclamation facility and perhaps a corp yard is available for whatever use the city determines is the best use for that. I'll just leave it at that. I want to say what that use might be. And as mentioned, the water tank, there's some other slight offset costs there. So over time, there's certainly far more option at the Rigetti site.
Thanks, and I think that's important to note for the public. And then I did notice that several of the objective evaluations back in the May 214 study on the Rigetti site have increased from moderate to highly or high or high moderate. And I just want to make that clear, that that's not just a result of the cooperative landowner, but it's also a result of some of these other factors that you've mentioned so that somebody knows we're still being totally objective.
Yeah, that's correct. We fundamentally looked at every issue again, and we had the benefit of some new information on studies that helped us do that.
Okay, well, I'd first like to say, City Council, thank you again for creating us. This has been a fun process, and as you can tell, a wide spectrum of input goes into every meeting and deliberation we have on this issue, and I think it's been a great benefit to the community and the process as we move forward and tackle issues like this, because it is a dynamic process, and it is great to bring this into the forum and be transparent with how we deal with these issues. For me, I think Tri-W was studied in 2014. It was on that short list and didn't rise to the top. It's pretty easy, in my mind, we're looking at a site that has enhanced water reclamation opportunities, being the closest to our community. It's cheaper in the long run. When you look at operational costs and energy and pumping, we're not pumping at the additional 3,000 feet there and then 3,000 feet back. It meets your city's goals that you have put on this project. It appears to be the highest permissible site in Coastal's mind, which is something I'm very sensitive to, and most likely will have lower construction costs as well, having more acreage available to us. So I know I'm one of many here, so I would have to turn to the advisory committee, but I'm comfortable recommending tonight that we pursue Rigetti, but I also see the value in the additional deliberation and additional public input now that we are making such a, I don't want to say radical, because they've both been discussed, but we are making a shift in sites, and people now are starting to engage on that matter, that something new has come to light, new information, and so there is benefit in continuing it further. I guess I would like to hear from you if you do just want right away for us to talk about this at our next meeting, or if you do feel that there is, time is of the essence, and you would like us to deliberate and make some action tonight.
Mr. Mayor, if I could just clarify where we are as a staff in the process. We have completed fatal flaws on both sites, and both are open for progression. We have gone as far as we can with both facility master planning and environmental review without wasting money on a site we don't know we're going to go to. So we have gone as far as we can on the facility master planning, for example, the broad facility master planning without knowing where we want to go. So we're right at the moment, right about now, where we are hitting the pause button with the facility master planners and the environmental review and the program managers, and are ready to go deeper on one side or the other. But there's, I want to both assure you that we're not spending extra money on one side or the other. Instead, we're just going to hit pause, and once we know where to go, we'll turn the switch back on again and start going there.
Great, thanks for that. So we'll turn it back to council for discussion. My thoughts on this was looking forward to feedback from the Wharf CACs, since you had a preview of this issue prior to coming to this joint session, and then having this discussion here, a more robust presentation. So not to say that we don't need to consider, you know, a little bit more process or time to discuss this with the community, but personally, I was just curious on what the Wharf CACs recommendation would be on the site location. Those are my comments, and I'll just turn to John, and then Noah, and then back to our left on comments from council.
Well, I do think time is of the essence, however, time is of the essence, one way or the other. You can do it too quickly, and that increases your costs, or you cannot do it quickly enough, and that increases your costs. And the way I look at the decision is, you know, from the end user and the cost considerations to the community, we've got some costs which really are the capital costs associated with acquiring the land and building the facility, and the piping, and the pumping, and all of those technical things that go into it. And then we've got the operation costs or operational costs of the facility itself to consider. And then the third piece, and Bill brings up a good point, is a master water use plan. We have reuse potentials that are offsets to both of those cost issues. And it would be great to have the time to be able to study the infinite details that I've heard tonight that contribute to reuse potentials, what those might be, and what the dollar return could possibly be. If you could tell me tonight that could be done in two months, I would recommend that and would want to look at that as a possibility. But I don't think you're going to tell me that that's going to take two months. You're going to tell me that's going to take a long time. I do not think the cost of the land, when you look at the overall cost of the project, is significant. There are other use potentials for that property, and so try not to focus from a cost standpoint just on the land being larger or more acreage. I think that could be advantageous to the community. And so the one thing that does stand out in my mind when Ms., boy, I got to get her, Tina Metzger came up, this is new news to a community that's right next door to reconsideration of a site. And although I would like to move forward quickly, including making a decision tonight, I would like to see some deliberation with the community neighbors in that area that could happen before a final decision is made. And so that's my input.
Okay, great. And just being mindful of time, we've got about 12 minutes, so if we can deliberate through this and turn it back to Wharf CAC and in discussion with council, Noah?
Yes, thank you. I think that the concerns from the Nutmeg neighborhood are actually very predictable and also very important. And I agree that we have done some outreach there, but with this transition to Rigetti being potentially the number one site, it's important that we reengage and make sure that they are given the chance to be heard again and be at the table for the decisions that would come forward. I'm mostly interested in hearing from the Wharf CAC now, whether they'd like to chew on this a little more and revisit it March 1st and then come back to council. I think the difference of adding a couple of weeks to do that is, in the long term, probably worthwhile. Personally, I've looked at all the options enough to feel strongly that Rigetti is the best choice, given all the benefits, and that's removing the corp yard from the equation, which I think can become confusing. When you look at our goals, it's clearly a water reclamation facility with a water reclamation plan that's going to be implemented and so forth. The corp yard, for example, is a nice to have. I also get a very concern when we hear the potential for development on the rest of the Rigetti property, knowing that Coastal will be keen to make sure that we're not creating a growth-inducing component with the additional water that's being created, and also knowing that I think the Nutmeg neighborhood would have quite a bit to say about that.
Matt?
Yes, and I appreciate all your work with Wharf CAC. I really like you guys being here and speaking to all the points. And so in terms of time, I'd really like to give it right back to Wharf CAC right now.
Thanks. Before we do that, Mr. Rick, about, could you put the slide up that gave us timing options? It was, and that'll probably help inform what's going on. Okay, so I would concur with everyone else up here, I just thought we could take a look at this, and maybe option then would be?
Option two.
Option two. So I would like to know if that seems right for the WRF CAC. Thanks.
Great. So turn back to the Wharf CAC and get your input on that. And part of that is bringing back to, if option two's consensus and what we'd like to do. Also like to hear not just that path, but input on the site. That was, you know, one of the main purposes of having a joint meeting and what the determination, or at least to this point, what the preferred site would be from the Wharf CAC.
Sure, understandable. As I said earlier, I'm comfortable in moving forward with option one, but we're all in the thick of it here, and the rest of the community might not necessarily be so. So having option two is nice to have and does, I think, incorporate the community and reengage them once again, and would probably be advisable at this point. So I'll turn it over quickly for, I guess, a round of just your thoughts on Rigetti. That's what the council wants to hear, and the ability for us to revisit it one more time and engage the community on March 1st. So, Valerie?
I'm comfortable with option one, but for purposes of more community input, perhaps the March date is better.
I agree with Valerie.
I feel very comfortable with Rigetti if you're going to stay in the Morro Valley. If you're willing to spend a little more time in number three, which was the Tri-W, then I think it would be well worth the time, and it would as well give the Rigetti residents time to evaluate what would happen there.
I actually found out that the Rancho Colina property was not being, was kind of fallen out at a harbor advisory meeting on January 7th, when the harbor advisory director or harbor master mentioned it. And I think that it's been a very short while, and I think that it would be a disservice to the community to just move. to the community to just move on right now. And I think that we need to let the public have a little bit of time to digest this. I mean, we got a report here that's, I don't know how thick, but it's, it needs, we need time to process.
Yeah, I'm in favor of the, the Regetti site, but I really would like to get the community input. I mean, we, I think that's something that we need to involve more and more outreach to the community, especially where it's going now, and let people know what's going on. That's it.
I agree. Option two, two weeks is not a major delay.
Well, I think you have general consensus that option two is preferred.
Okay, unless there's any other discussion from council, yeah, revisit that. Count, Noah, you have comment?
Yeah, I appreciate the conclusion there, and I, and I think Dale's comments that we're all thinking about is option two with some direct outreach to the Nutmeg neighborhood. Make sure that they're given notice about the next WRFCAC meeting and, and the report would be excellent.
Okay, great. John? Concur? So?
Just really briefly, I think that, you know, it has, this isn't a brand new development. I mean, Regetti was neck and neck with Rancho Calina a year and a half ago, and we had like a lot of, a great deal of public input and conversation about the first options report, which led to the second options report, which led to the preferred site at Rancho Calina. So it's just, but there has been a change due to negotiation. So I think that, you know, just reminding everyone that there was also going to be a neighborhood compatibility issue at Rancho Calina. Now, this, you know, maybe, that, those neighbors were much closer than the neighborhood near Regetti. But, so we were always going to have this conversation moving forward. So I think it's time to have it now in this case.
Great. And, you know, unless the staff would like a motion on this, I think there's general consensus amongst both boards that option two is the preferred path. And appreciate the WRFCAC's work on this. And we, we're at a point where we have five minutes in between our next meeting. And unless there's any closing comments, I would adjourn the meeting. Okay, meeting adjourned. Thank you. Thanks very much for all your work.